To call this regular meeting of the Savinno Park City Council to order. Conrad is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Maggie will follow in leading us in the invocation, if you'd please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our Heavenly Father, we're happy to come to you and thank you for the rain that we have been getting, the soul, and we know we're all gonna get some in another 10 minutes, so keep your eye on it, but you've blessed us with so many things and we thank you for the rain that we've so desperately needed. We ask you to bless the council, we're in a transition now and looking forward in making rules, regulations, and budgeting decisions, ask you to give us the wisdom and the guidance to make all the right decisions. And Lord, our nation itself is coming into some very different times. We ask you to wrap your arms around our entire nation and grant the wisdom and the tranquility and all the good things that need to happen. We wish you to take a close look at it all and bless us in these areas. We thank you for being there for us. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Okay, citizens to be heard, there are no citizens to be heard, which brings us to item number four, City Council comments. Buddy?
Just welcome everyone, good, thanks for being here.
Maggie?
I'm glad to have everybody here, and I also want to thank everybody connected with the city that worked on Arbor Day, that includes all of our wonderful employees who just, not Arbor Day, what was that, Fourth of July, I'm thinking budget, anyway, it was fabulous, everybody had a wonderful time, and it's certainly an event that we can be proud of. Thank you all.
Conrad?
Good to see everyone.
Pete?
I think that says it all. So, one of the things I like to do is recognize people that make a difference, and so, one of the things I've always seen is teachers that step into your life that really make a difference, and I wanted to recognize and give a shout out to Christina McFarlane, who was nominated as Teacher of the Year at Clark High School, so.
Good job.
Very good. Lee?
Thank everybody for attending, this is the best way you can keep us honest, thank you.
And I would like to follow on what Maggie said, if your child is complaining about Tommy John Syndrome from throwing part of 14,000 water balloons, 16,000 water balloons, next year just don't let him throw 16,000 water balloons. Brings us to item number five, presentation, commentation, and announcements. Item 5.1, recognition, employee Rolando Salinas Jr., earned as paramedic license, his paramedic license. Chief?
Thank you Mayor and Council. As you're aware, I sent an email out here just a short time ago, unfortunately Rowley wasn't able to attend last month's meeting, but he is here tonight, and I'd like to recognize him for his actions. Thank you for allowing me to take the time to acknowledge Rolando Rowley Salinas for his exceptional contributions and unwavering dedication to our team. Rowley started with our department in January of 2022, and in that short time has consistently demonstrated remarkable skills and professionalism, making him a huge asset to our department. In the last year, Rowley enrolled in paramedic training at the University of Texas Health Science Center. Rowley took the initiative to start this rigorous training on his own time while still working his normal schedule at the department. I'm thrilled to announce that firefighter Rowley Salinas has successfully passed the National Registry Exam and the Texas Department of State Health Services Paramedic Exam. This is a significant achievement and a testament to Rowley's dedication, hard work, and commitment to excellence in emergency medical services. Passing the National Registry Paramedic Exam is no small feat. This training took a year of classwork, clinical rotations in various hospitals across the city, as well as clinical rotations riding along with San Antonio EMS. It requires extensive knowledge, rigorous preparation, and a strong determination to excel. Rowley has demonstrated all these qualities and more, and we are incredibly proud to have such a skilled and motivated professional on our team. Please join me in congratulating Rowley on this outstanding accomplishment. I look forward to seeing the continued positive impact Rowley will have on our community and with our team with this new qualification. Going off script here a little bit, I can say that Rowley is just an incredible individual. He's, brings a positiveness to the department, makes me proud every day that he's on shift, and is just always, always there whenever I ask something of him, and his interaction with the public is incredible, and I couldn't be prouder.
Thank you very much Chief. Did you want to get a picture of the two of them? Come on, come on up, he's gonna-
I think the City Council would like to shake his hand, too. Get up here.
Congratulations. Is this your family back here? Is that your family? Okay, well, tell them you're really good.
I'd like to also, also mention real quick off the record that Rowley is actually newly, newly engaged as well.
All right, congratulations.
Item 5.2, recognition, excellence in performance by a city employee. Deanna Zoller, Administrative Department, Bill.
Brenda is gonna come up and represent that.
All right.
Well, thank you Mayor and Council. The City Secretary and I recommended Deanna Zoller, the city's finance HR clerk, for this quarter's Employee Excellent Award. Deanna has been with the city since April 2021. While she doesn't get the opportunity to show her awesomeness as much as some other staff, Deanna has really stepped up to assist with city events, including coordinating with vendors and working, actually working the events. Deanna's assistance with the Independence Day event was invaluable, and she single-handedly made a contact with Sam's Club and secured the donation of the water for the event. She maintains her usual responsibilities of payroll and accounts payable while she learned and temporarily assisted with the municipal court while the deputy, deputy court clerk position was vacant. In addition, Deanna is backup for permits, ensuring she truly can help cover every department in the city. She has encouraged supported records management projects, and she helps keep us all supplied with sugar and chocolate, as well as extremely tasty salsa. Tonight, we recognize Deanna and her services to the city. Thank you, Deanna.
Thank you.
We'd like to thank her, shake her hand, too. Get up here.
Come on, come on up and get your picture taken.
I can, I can only get up once.
with the Savinno Park Police Department, Chief.
Thank you, everybody.
Wow.
So, this week, most of you all know, Kelsey will complete her work with the police department after a 10-week internship towards her master's degree with the University of Colorado. During her time with us, Kelsey was instrumental in obtaining, organizing, and compiling citywide employee salary data from over 18 municipalities for inclusion in the Savinno Parks 2024 Salary Survey. Kelsey has also been busy utilizing and developing her analytical solutions to help develop and track data used by the police department for their best practices accreditation reports. And as Kelsey concludes her work this week, we want to recognize and thank her for her contributions to the city and to the Savinno Park Police Department, wish her the best of luck moving forward in your career path.
Good job.
Picture, picture, we gotta take a picture with that.
That's a big one.
And her family was joining us here.
Thank you very much, Kelsey. Kelsey, why don't you come forward and get a picture with your entire family? Please, please, come forward. Chief, please, if you would hand her that again with her entire family.
Give it back.
Is there a lens cover still on? Oh, no, that's the little bottom thing. They don't have lens covers anymore. No, no, no more lens covers.
All right, what a great picture.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number six, consent agenda, all matters listed under this item are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman, on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Do we have a motion to approve and/or accept items 6.1 through 6.4?
So moved.
We have a motion from Lee and a second from Pete. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries 5-0. City managers report, all matters listed under this item are considered routine by the City Council and will only be considered at the request of one or more alderman. Coincident with the listed item, discussion will generally occur after the end of the item, eight items. Does anybody want to pull any of items 7.1 through 7.6? There being noted request, it brings us to item number eight, regular agenda items. Discussion action, parking options in the vicinity of City Hall, update. Chris and Bill.
Good evening. Bill, did you want to start or do you want to jump in?
Well, I think in May we brought this for you, we showed you some options, and we, we talked a little bit about the number of parking spaces, and my intent was just to get it in front of you, just so you can start processing it. And now I'm bringing it in front of you again, so you can process it more. We did a little bit of fidelity in terms of trying to determine how many trees are gonna be taken out, and what's the difference between the two options. I'm not going to say that the exact number is correct on the slide, because I walked it and counted it. Some of the trees are surveyed, some of them are not, and you just kinda gotta wicker through it. But I will say that tomorrow, or sometime this week when it dries out, we have the area, the external areas marked with two different color flags, and when you drive over there and just take a look, you can see the footprint, and you'll see approximately what it is. And what I'm gonna tell you is that if you take a look at that overlay, you got option one in the light blue and option two in the, in the black, there is not a lot of significant difference, but there is a fairly sizable number of spaces gained with option two, and there's a couple fairly sizable trees that are removed in, in option two. But let me, I'll turn it over to Chris, and then we'll kinda work it from there.
Yeah, so as we discussed a couple of months ago, these are the two options, and I'll just go through them in detail, a little bit more detail. Option one gives us approximately 79 parking spaces and saves the, the cluster of trees, I just had it, kinda here in the middle. There's some good-sized trees in there, and that's what we're attempting to save with this option. Again, it's about 79 parking spaces. With Days of Vala, we have 55 parking spaces for a total of 134. 60 to 70 trees would be removed, and the walking trail will need to be, likely need to be relocated, as well as the rain garden. Option two provides 118 parking spaces, and as you can see in this option, that cluster of trees that I highlighted before would be eliminated with this option. So it provides significantly more parking spaces. When added to the 55 on Days of Vala, we're up to 173 total. So it's quite a bit more parking, I'm gonna say it, not a lot of additional trees removed. I know Maggie's looking at me like, that's a lot of trees. It is, but in the grand scheme of things, I think it's worth the additional parking spaces, because you do need them. It's about 22 additional trees that would need to be removed, and then everything else is the same. The rain garden, probably 40 to 50 feet of rain garden will need to be relocated instead of 20 to 30, but those, those are the two options. And we, we have been looking at non-paving options for this. There's some new products out there that, they're very similar to what I spoke about before, the GeoGrid. There's a new one, it's new to the U.S., it's been used in Canada for quite a while. I cannot remember the name of it to save my life right now, but it's a low-density polyethylene instead of a high-density, it makes it more flexible, and so it still carries the strength to, you know, have a fire truck, but it's more flexible, so if you put it over a rock or, you know, somebody does something crazy driving over it, it's less likely to break, it'll just flex. So that is an option we're looking at. I'm trying to get some cost on it, because it is fairly new to the U.S. We're trying to get some pricing on it to see how that would compare to some of our other options that are out there. In talking to a couple of vendors, part of this parking area does get used on a fairly frequent basis, people walk in the trails, will park in there. They don't recommend using the grassed pavers or GeoGrid in the area, because constant vehicular traffic is just gonna kill the grass. So they, they are talking about using a paver system within the primary drive aisle, and then in a couple of parking spaces, like dedicating those, they, okay, these are the everyday use spaces, you get, you know, three, four, five, 10, whatever we want, but then the rest of it, we would do in grass, so that from the street, it looks like a grass field. So those are some of the options that we're currently looking at.
Okay. Anybody having questions, comments? Lee?
Bill, you're the one leaving, that's been leaving this project. The events we have here, what's our highest draw on automobiles to park for that we have an event here? Christmas, Arbor Day, whatever?
Arbor Day and Christmas.
Okay, and how short are we following, I mean, can we justify with need the destruction of those few trees?
Can you justify that?
Can you justify?
I think I can.
Okay.
I mean, you know, here's the deal. When we, when Tech started doing Northwest Military Highway, they were taking out trees, and it was like, oh my goodness, and, you know, it was, it was, it was a significant event, I mean, but I would contend now, if you take a look at it, you know, it's, depending on who, you know, where you stand and what lens you're looking at, it's, it doesn't look that bad, and it seems pretty acceptable based upon what's going on.
Okay, but we, we did have to weather the storm getting through to where we are.
We did.
Okay, you did, I did, we all did. Second question, with the movement of that many parking spaces for need, where does that put us with access for wheelchairs getting over here to where the fun is? Are we gonna have to put down hard pavement all the way around, make a, a trail available for individuals for handicap? And how many handicapped, are we gonna turn all of this into handicap, and all the able-bodied people have to go verren park in order to accommodate all these people? I'm not predicting anything, I'm just wondering how much, how much is gonna be handicapped, and how do we allow them to make ingress and egress across waters right now, not a good space, not a good trail?
And that's a Chris question as opposed to a Bill question, because that's ADA.
Yeah, we would wanna make a percentage of them, ADA accessible, which is where the pavers would come into play. What I would recommend is, you know, we talked about doing some pavers, you know, for everyday use, have, you know, one or two of those be handicapped during everyday use, and then, you know, three or four that are not handicapped for everyday use, and then during an event, we have temporary ADA signs that we stick up, and we make all of those ADA during an event.
So baked into this is temporary signage? That's, it's in the plan?
Temporary signage is certainly an option, yes.
Okay, can you indicate on this drawing up here, where the gate is, the back gate getting into the police parking area?
Yes, yeah, you got it.
Right in the northwest corner here, or page northwest.
It goes right like this, right from here, just like that, there's a path.
Okay, but, but where the cars will go through, because we got a back gate now in this secure parking area for the police cars. Where is that gate?
That's gates right here.
Planning on doing a little carve-out, no parking, in case they need to get in and out? We, we paid for a gate for a reason. If we start blocking it with future plans, then why did we buy a gate? So, is there indication that you're gonna save two parking spaces and put a curb there so that we know we don't park there?
We could certainly do that, or, you know, we put the, the everyday parking kind of in this corner, and then these parking spaces would only be used during, during events.
Okay, sensible.
Three hours every-
And I, I would even argue that, you know, if we do set up everyday parking over in this corner, that the rest of it, there'd be some kind of penalty if somebody did choose to park in the grass.
Especially where police park, yes. Thank you.
Okay, Maggie?
If we take out all those trees, will we-
A little bit closer, please.
Do what?
To the mic.
Now?
Yes, please, thank you.
Will we still get to be Tree City USA?
Yeah, that, that is not one of the criteria, you know, the number of trees you cut down in a year, it's, it's not based upon that at all. It's based upon the funding that you do, the activities that you do, your policies, and everything, we'll easily be able to do that.
Okay, so that, that won't affect that?
No.
Okay.
A lot of those are really small trees. If you take a look at, like, this clump here, that I think there's seven trees in, maybe nine, there's a lot of little trees here, these are all little trees, except for that's a big one. You know, that's certainly a big one. There's some, four big ones right here, four or five, and there's some big ones back here. I mean, but these are the bigger ones right here.
Okay.
So there's still trees in, in the background.
And, and this still is a concept, we have not gotten into detailed design yet. I do want to point out that we did, you know, in this concept, we attempted to save the perimeter trees, so you have some trees over here and here, there's actually, trees over here on the right-hand side, we tried to save, there's actually some additional trees over here that don't show up in the survey. If we shifted this entire parking lot a couple of feet page north, I think this tree right here, we could save and lose two parking spaces. We might actually be able to keep those parking spaces, but, you know, that, it's a moderate shift to save a fairly significant tree.
Yeah.
That's something I would look into.
All right. And another question is, now we purchased the area across the street from the fire department, and we're gonna turn that into a parking lot?
Well, we may reach a point where if we develop enough parking here, we're controlling that for residential purposes, as opposed to it's gonna be somebody's side lot, and if the, the city has the ability to sell it, a future City Council, or this City Council for that matter, can sell it for home construction, but not for, hey, this is my side yard, or some other purpose. So, we control our destiny. Bill, do you want to talk about that?
We have options. The best parking option is not across the street, and you know, the justification for this is health and, for safety reasons, I mean, we, it's not a great risk, but there is a risk out there that having people park all the way up and down Days of Vala, and on Elm Springs and Bike Way, and having them move here, there is some element of risk. And, you know, a sidewalk will help mitigate that at some point in time, when we, when we get that done, but ideally, you, you want your parking to be within reasonable walking distance, and there is a great demand for our, our city events. And, you know, our police department, actually, we had a full, full courtroom here on Thursday, and they, we utilized the overflow parking as well there, so, hadn't done that in a while, but, anyway.
Congratulations.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
We're not asking for a decision right now, but, again, at some point in time, we want to move forward, and we, the, the current biggest challenge is funding, and that Curtis and I are working together, and we'll get the engineer involved to where we can try to dovetail this project into the federal grant on, on, on Days of Vala, because it is an authorized category of funding for our project. And so, once we do that, we have to be prepared to make a decision in the next couple of months, and that's why I'm gonna try to get this in front of you a couple of times, try to show you what we got out there, and we can negotiate certain things.
Okay, so we could go out and, and look at what you've got, you know, if we can actually see the plan.
And you might want to get Johnny or I involved, only because there's two different colors of flags, and I think the red flags are the additional trees, and it's still hard to tell exactly which trees go.
I understand.
Okay. Pete?
So Bill, I'm assuming your preferred option is option number two? Is that correct?
At this point in time, I think option number two is the best overall, considering the safety for the, for the city, and I think that just like Northwest Military Highway, you can then put more trees on the side and do some other things.
Yep. And, and this isn't just for city events, I mean, when you look at the voting that's coming up in November, we have a big crowd that comes in, so we need additional parking.
We typically do, for sure.
So Chris, I'm, I'm gonna ask you an unfair question, it has to do with cost of option number two. Have you ever seen The Price is Right, where they move that thing along, and they say you gotta get within a certain range? Are we talking, are we talking 400,000, are we talking 800,000? What, what's just ballpark, what, what are we talking?
I did that analysis last Wednesday, and I do not remember. It was not 800,000, I don't even think it was 400,000.
Exactly.
I, I, I wanna say it was in the 250 range.
And I think you've told us that at some point in the past.
Okay. So 250, 300, something around there. What's, Bill, what's the soonest that this, we could expect to see something like this?
Well, right now, our project's been approved, and we're now in the environmental assessment, and this has gotta be part of that environmental assessment, as long, as well as the parking along Days of Vala. And then since we're considering doing some reconstruction work on, in Chavino Creek, that's gotta be part of it, and we've communicated that to your guy.
Logan.
Logan. I haven't met with him, though, and sat there and said, one, two, three, four, and, and done it, you know, step, you know, repeat after me, are we all in the same sheet of music, but, but we're talking about that.
I've done that.
You've, you've done that.
So this could be two years out?
Well, we're at 90% plans for Days of Vala. We get the environmental piece back, and then it's a matter of getting the okay and working with our project manager and then saying, okay, let's go to 100% plans, and this could be six, six months out to 100% plans, and then you go out for bid.
Logan said he was confident we were still be able to get the one to two-month categorical exemption environmental review, one to two months. Logan was still confident the environmental review would take.
But kinda get to where you can use the parking lot, we're looking at least a year and a half out?
Yeah, that may be two years, yeah.
Two years out. My next question, couldn't this be done in parts?
It could be, I mean, if, the biggest visual in the whole thing is gonna be the tree removal. You could go out and do the tree removal early, and I mean, the ground out there is fairly stable, so you could go out there, do the tree removal, and start parking people on it. The main reason for doing the GeoGrid is to provide a, a more stabilized surface, but also it allows for placing buttons within the GeoGrid, so you can delineate those parking spaces, and you don't have public works going out before every event and laying it out the best that they remember it, with flags.
So my comment is, you know, two years out, we, we have an immediate problem, and two years out is a long wait, and, and I agree with you on the risk of the safety, and that should be a top priority, I think, in, in our minds, is- is is when when I don't want to get anybody hurt in Chavano Park going to an event.
And and when you, when you talk about a two-part, a two-step, the part along Days of Allah is certainly gonna be constructed with the road. The other portion of it, we have significant cash reserves. If we're assured that this is a part of the plan, and we put it as a part of the plan, Bill, would there be a problem with us borrowing from ourselves and then paying ourselves back to build the parking lot itself out of our capital reserves and then refurbishing it with the, replenishing it with the HUD fund?
Not certain, but probably.
Well, we want, we we can check on that, Pete, but you you raised a very good point, and if we could use our own money as a front load for using their money on a back load, that works. Conrad?
So, without going any more Q and A, just a kind of idea here, we, does this, um, will this solve our parking issues during peak time? Or will they need?
It's gonna greatly mitigate it.
So it doesn't solve it?
But I I, here's what I think happens. I've talked to so many people, says, I I was gonna stop by your event, and everything was full, and I just kept going. And so, in a way, you're gonna, you're gonna, um, solve it for a portion of it, and then it's gonna get saturated too. I mean, frankly. And, you know, on terms of tree removal, and I'm trying to be, um, I'm just trying to be transparent, we can do that in phases to where it is, um, we do a little bit, see, measure it and see what's going on, and then we prioritize this portion over there that you move over, and then you kind of can gauge what it is.
So while we're looking at this, I might suggest that we say, you know, if if this is not enough, does it need to be bigger, or does it, we need something somewhere else? And then maybe that does save a few of these big trees, because you could put more parking somewhere else, um, if it doesn't solve the problem, especially in two years. So, maybe those trees could stay there, and you actually make them, make it bigger. Just an idea.
Do we still have, oh.
Maggie?
Do we still have access to the parking lot to the north? Or wherever?
Uh, the nine-one-one parking, whenever we have community events, uh, that we use.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
And, yes, absolutely.
How many, how many, about, how many spaces are there?
So often, Maggie, that's actually eaten up by everybody that's helping with the event. And so it's not like we get attendee parking there, it's that we get to have close-up parking for those of us who are attending the event. Buddy, you have any thoughts? Okay, uh, one final question, we have that Aggie-built Boy Scout bridge that is out there. It is the most amazing Boy Scout project that I think I have ever seen. And whoever that kid is, we should send him a letter telling him that he built the best bridge ever. Are we gonna have to tear that puppy up?
Well, um.
I didn't know it was Aggie-built, that changes everything.
Actually, it's not Aggie-built.
His dad wasn't an Aggie?
I I don't think so.
Yeah, that is the most, that is.
Maybe I'm wrong.
Best bridge ever.
Yeah.
I I don't know where that's located, um, within the property, we didn't pick it up in the survey, but we can probably relocate it.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna lose the bridge. Man, that is a nice Boy Scout project. Okay, uh, anybody else, any questions, comments? If not, uh, brings us to item number eight point two, Chris, I think you're still up. Discussion, presentation, city of Chavano Park drainage project update.
Just start started off, just for context. Last, uh, a couple of years ago, the water, uh, the Texas Water Development Board did a data call for all projects, and we entered our two remaining big projects into that, it's on a database. And then they did a funding call in January, February, and then because of our per capita income, we were told, you know, you're not gonna be competitive for this. And so, there is a couple of opportunities in the future, but we don't want to just let it spring up on us. One in the future is that when we do our next tranche of, uh, road projects, we include a drainage project with it, because the northeast side of this road will probably not need full reconstruction, could maybe do a mill and overlay and or a partial, and then that way it won't be as expensive, a drainage project could be done at the same time. The second thing is, we could then compete again for a federal, a second federal project with our representative, and maybe we would, uh, be considered favorable. But in order to do either one of those, we really have to, like, think through the problem. Do we have the best solution, how much is it gonna cost? Do we give our engineer more time, more instructions to begin planning that as we move forward? So that's where we want to pick up, because a couple of years ago, we said, hey, let's dust off the the plan. What was the plan, and and we gave you an update, we're we're just dusting it off again and saying how feasible it is. So, there we go.
So you may recall, um, back in two thousand seventeen, I believe it was, we did the Drainage Master Plan, and we identified Turkey Creek as, um, area number three. And at that time, we came up with a, a conceptual plan, a schematic plan, um, which is shown on the the left-hand side here. And then in two thousand twenty, we did more of a preliminary engineering report for Turkey Creek, um, which is what you see on the right-hand side, where we, we took that concept and we kind of proofed it out a little bit further, um, to see what kind of obstacles we had in the way as far as utilities, and and get a more refined, um, opinion of probable construction cost. And so what we've done, um, well, actually, just go back on the project. Um, so the idea on Turkey Creek, you can see on the left-hand side that the colored area is the, the flood inundation area that we calculated, some of it is actually FEMA floodplain. Um, and there are multiple homes that are within the the flood inundation area. And so the the general concept is to do a culvert system that would take the water underground, uh, carry it through the subdivision, and discharge into Almost Creek, uh, where it naturally goes. Um, when TechSat was designing Northwest Military, uh, we had worked with them, and we actually got them to install some of the culvert for us. Um, that is this portion along Northwest Military, so it actually, it collects water from the north. Well, right now it doesn't, right now it's blocked off, because we don't want to create a worse issue over here. We can unplug this pipe, convey the water this way, and then through the subdivision. Right now, it's installed, but it's not active. Um, but TechSat did do that for us. There are eight to twelve properties, um, that we would have to go through with this option. Um, we we've looked at various alternatives. This right here, we really, we have to go between these homes. Um, to try and come all the way to the road and come down the road, there's too much elevation. Um, the storm would be exceedingly deep, and it just wouldn't function properly. And then, at the downstream end, the same thing, Almost Basin is down here off the page. We have to find a way through these homes, and then we would discharge right in here, where it already is a a natural channel that's pretty well-defined. Back in two thousand twenty, the S-
Real, real quickly, real quickly, um. This seems like this is going to be much more efficient at moving water than what we have right now.
Yes.
Those are people's backyards. What, what is that going to do, and how much water are we gonna be dumping in those particular backyards when we?
So, um, you know, I I've walked through there a number of times, Mayor Marn is, I think that's his house right here. Okay? They have a huge, huge, it's a natural cul-de-sac, I mean, it's a natural drainage area right there, it's unusable as it is now. So, you know, if we, and you're not talking about putting pipe in there probably, at that point in time, this is probably just a falloff, and it's just improving that so that you're you're making that system better. It's, it'd be kind of like what we did on, uh, Windmill. It was really trashy, it was all grown up, and then the residents fought us on that cul- that culvert. And now, it's the best thing that they ever did, because we made improvement, landscaped it and did it, and it was fantastic. So, the real challenge is these properties right here. I have contacted last week, that person, that person, and that person, I had, I didn't get a hold of this one, but the water goes right through, right on that guy's property, and it cuts through here. All three of them are interested in, um, hearing about what we would have to offer. I have previously talked to this, this, this owner right here.
That's a vacant lot.
There's no lot there, and then this, every time I go back here, they want to know what we can do to fix their, theirs here. So, you know, here's the, you need two here, and you need two here. If you can get that conveyed into a natural drainage area here, there's no lot there either. And so, once it gets back here, it goes right along here, it goes right through the back of the properties at the very border. So I think I'm optimistic that you could get consensus, and what I intend to do is go reach out to them and say, you know, I need to feel, you have someone that's gonna say, hell, no, we're not ever doing that, and puts the whole project at risk. If there is nobody, if if they're amenable to hearing a solution, then we ought to come back, and we ought to take it to the next level.
Okay, I have have a question before we go back to the rest of the council members. She continually looks at building projects. As she, if she comes in with a building permit, says, I'm gonna build something out, should we be considering, and how much would it cost to just put the culverts in there before she does the building? Because the easiest time to get those, those boxes in there is before construction instead of after construction, because she hadn't lost anything.
I agree, and I, I think that the, I think the actual drainage comes right through, right here.
Yeah.
Right on that corner, and she's got some high ground right there.
Well, if you look at the left-hand side, where we actually show the flood inundation area, and I I do believe that's actually FEMA floodplain, um, it it's been a while since I've looked at this lot, but I don't think she would be able to build a home right now because of the floodplain.
Yeah.
And so, this project really is a life safety issue. Um, my, my great aunt actually lives on Turkey Creek, and she tells me anytime there's a decent amount of rain, like we're getting right now, Turkey Creek will flood, and the people on the back half of the cul-de-sac, they get trapped back there. And if the water gets deep enough, then you can't get emergency services back there. Um, and so that does help with the funding. Um, the average household income in Chavano hurts you, um, it's too high. But because it is a life safety issue, it, that certainly helps in potential funding sources.
Okay, okay, um, well, Chris, you're up now, I apologize for taking time there.
No problem. Um, so, in two thousand twenty, when we did the OPC on this, and OPC, Opinion of Probable Construction Costs, I just get lazy and say OPC, um, was three point one million dollars. We did an updated OPC based on the current economy, and it's up to four point two million. That's a thirty-seven percent increase, most of that increase is due to the box culverts. You know, back when we did the the original OPC, there were a lot of drainage projects being built, there's a lot of box, a lot of box culverts going in the ground. Here, over the last couple of years, we've been in a drought, drainage hasn't been as important to the region. Um, so not as many drainage projects are getting built. So I, I believe that four point two million's a high number based on low quantities of box culvert. If we bid this job out with the amount of box culverts we're talking about, I think it's gonna come in less than four point two million. Um, and then the Texas Water Development Board, um, I got some Bill's conversations with them, we're looking at five to ten percent funding, uh, potential from them. Again, that goes back to the average income in Chavano Park. Elm Spring, we went through the same process. Um, again, Elm Spring itself is the primary means of conveyance. There are a couple of homes that are within, within the inundation zone. Um, mostly the front yards, though, I don't know that any homes are actually flooding, save maybe one here, and I believe this one right here. I believe the, this one and this one both, um, may experience flooding of the home itself, but the rest of them are mostly yards, and then these down here. Um, again, the idea on this one was to put in underground drainage system, uh, to carry the the runoff to Almost Creek. In this case, the drainage area is not as large, so we're looking at pipe. Um, I don't recall the size of pipe offhand, but it was, it was a pipe. There are a lot more drainage projects going in the ground right now with pipe. And so, in two thousand twenty, the OPC was one point three million dollars. Based on today's values, it's one point four million. Um, so that's only a seven percent increase over the last four years. And again, potential funding from Texas Water Development Board is five to ten percent of the total project.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Uh, questions, comments, concerns? Uh, Bill, but go back to you before we turn it over to council. Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I was just gonna say that because these landowners right down here on this map are not cooperative, what I've been talking to Chris about doing is, is taking that down the road, and then not increasing the outfall, but putting the outfall back to where it is currently now, and trying to mitigate the upper part, so that you're, you're, you're trying to prevent this, but you don't create anything more here. So that could be a challenge, that might be engine, you know, you know.
Well, that, that sounds like a fire hose is what that sounds like. When that water's not coming into those yards, all that water's gonna go into the pipe, and it's gonna be like a fire hose coming down the pipe. Bill, uh, what about the, the idea, there, there's one of our elderly citizens that lives they have no trees, they've got a big front yard, a lot of distance between their house and their neighbor's house, and a, and a eighty feet, a hundred feet.
We could go look at it, I mean, I could, I'll take a look at it.
It it's certainly an option, it's just the more we get away from the load, the higher the cost is gonna go.
Well, it'd be more pipe, but it'd be able to take the stuff into the Almost Basin instead of jumping it.
Right.
If we wound up, if we won't, excuse me, Maggie, I'm sorry, I wasn't talking into my mic. Um, instead of winding up in a situation where we just can't go, and then, yeah, we can go, but I'm, I would be interested in hearing what the flow rate's going to be when we capture all that water and we just push it through that, through the the pipe, as opposed to letting it spread out and meander down the road over hundreds of square feet, thousands.
I don't think we're gonna capture all the water. The intent would be just to capture some of it, it's already gonna move it, and then just to reduce the amount of, you're gonna have to move it on top of the road and underneath it, and try to keep it the same, but have a better outcome.
Yeah, and we won't design something that's gonna adversely impact a downstream neighbor, because I like my license, I like my job, and I want to keep it.
Well, we might be able to just completely remove the house, uh, we might want to buy the house. That may be actually a cheaper proposition.
Yeah, he offered that to us. He did, he said, well, you know, if you want to buy the house, it's, it's, I'm sure anything's for sale, right? I don't know how much you would do it. It's not for sale now, no.
Yeah, okay, okay, uh, Pete?
So, Chris, was there any consideration given to pumping stations? A lot of times, instead of doing natural drainage like that, you can put in a gathering and pumping station, and have, and you put in a lot, lot smaller lines, and you can evacuate, and once an area floods, you can evacuate it very, very quickly.
Yeah, so, pumps is not something that we considered on this. Um, I've done projects in the past with pumps. I'm gonna make up numbers, because I don't know the exact, but this is probably on the order of a hundred and fifty to two hundred cubic feet per second of water that drained through here during a design storm. Um, I did a project twelve years ago that pumped ten cubic feet per second, and it was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars just for the pumps. So that's why we don't even look at pumps ninety-nine percent of the time.
But in, when you have areas like this where you're restricted on where you can run lines, some sometimes it's a viable option, it depends on how fast you pump it down. I I agree with you, if you're talking very, very large pumps, they can be expensive, but if you, uh, it depends on the rate that you want to be able to pump it down.
Right, then, then we'd have to have a place to store the water, which is something we did look at. We did look at doing a detention basin, um, I don't remember the exact location, it was on the, on the north end of Elm Spring. We couldn't get enough detention volume to provide meaning meaningful benefit.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, it is now 7:21. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments from members of the public. Proposed amendments to Chapter 36 zoning to update the criteria for granting of variance to allow certain variances to ordinance standards without approval of the Board of Adjustments. And to allow possible additional special exemptions. Bill, Curtis.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so last month, we presented this same agenda item. That was primarily to show you a discussion item here. We actually have a public hearing and then later a possible discussion action. I'll run through this relatively quickly. There's only one update from what we showed you a month ago, and I'll definitely highlight that. Otherwise, I'll just run through it relatively quickly for the public. So we're going to go through five main topics here. Variance criteria, a new situat, proposed situational reduced setback. We changed this to the accessory buildings, which is where our one update is, special exceptions, and some other amendments. This is a very, this is the same slide I showed you. A lot of changes. It looks uh very busy and overwhelming. But ultimately, we boiled it down to these eight. The changes are, things were combined, and we matched it closer to state law and language. The only new addition that's not, or verbiage is coming directly from state law, almost verbatim, is number eight there, which is coming from case law, which came from our attorneys. And that's, this is a nice clean version of what is being proposed. It is eight criteria. And again, this is what the Board of Adjustment uses to guide their decisions when a petition comes to them or an application for a variance. This is the criteria they use. The new situational setback reduction. So the only trend when we looked at uh Board of Adjustment actions, when we went to the data, what had, what were they deciding? We're a five for five. Every single time an application came to them, for the one special exception we have on the books today in the city, it had been approved. So we are proposing that we just make it an automatic situational thing. If a property is owned, single-family residential, and they uh abut one of these four conditions. These are exact same conditions that has a special exception today. You can reduce your side or rear setback requirements up to 50%.
And we're going to come back and talk about these things later.
And so accessory buildings, this is the major, one major change here I want to highlight. So last month, when we came to you, so this this hole in red here is new. And where we're adding location limitations, accessory buildings, and saying that you're greater than eight feet, you can't be in the setbacks. Today, no accessory building is allowed in setbacks at all. Only portable building have to be a certain size, construction of certain materials, and be less than eight feet tall. And we originally came and had that you can put it within five feet of your property line. So now here, the language says you can put, if you have an eight-foot accessory building, you can put it just flat out within your building setbacks. If the adjacent property lines are enclosed by an eight-foot solid fence. So if there's eight-foot solid fence, you could put the building one foot from the property line. There's no longer that arbitrary five-foot limitation. On special exceptions, so the one that we just reviewed, which was on you meet the four conditions in your residential property that you can reduce by 50% your side or rear, which the board has done five out of five. We'd make that from 50 to 75%, so a more significant reduction. On a 30-foot setback, you're talking going from a 15 to an eight foot. It's an extra, you're talking seven foot in a 30-foot setback, what that means number-wise. So it's not a huge difference necessarily between the two numbers. And a new special exception allowed 10% reduction to side or rear setback in any situation. So there's no longer those four A, B, C, and D's that someone has to meet. Any property owner can come to the Board of Adjustment, make a petition, asking for a special exception to reduce the side or rear setback by 10%. So if you had a 30-foot setback, it's three feet. These are for lots of the situations where you're just, the building just touches the corner. It's a foot or two. And if they, if variances are very difficult to justify, that it's that you've, it's hardship, that's just the lay of your land and any of those things. So it's it's kind of a pressure valve for any small situation. And lastly, in the other amendments, I just want to highlight, we added definition for city, the green belt, sports court, variances, special substance grade, lots of things are missing. And then we added uh missing uses allowed in our C districts, which are Willoughby Manor, which of course, people can build garages and swimming pools and sports courts, but they were missing our ordinance. We want to clean that up so it's um matches. So that concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Okay, uh, do we have any citizens from the community who would like to comment at this time or have any questions? There being no citizen questions or comments, it's now 7:26. And we're going to go on to item seven point, uh, 8.4, Discussion Action. Ordinance O 2024 004, Amending Chapter 36 Zoning to Update the Criteria for Granting of the Variances. To Allow Certain Variations in Ordinate Standards Without Approval by the Board of Adjustments and to Allow Possible Additional Special Exceptions. This is a first reading. Uh, before we start into this, Bill, I want to clarify, uh, as far as a first reading is concerned. This is a very administrative regulation. All of these things are pretty simple to understand. Is it necessary for council to, uh, as an administrative change? Is it necessary for council to have a second reading on this if there is a complete consensus on the ordinance that's before us today?
Zoning, zoning has to be too.
Well, no, but we do too, but I don't know that by state law, we have to do too.
Yeah, not in zoning, you don't have to do it. I can, this is a determination of zone of administrative in nature. And I could pull that up real quick in the ordinance, and I could read that to you if you wanted. Got to find my website here. Must have deleted it from my iPad, which is a lot easier to read from, dang it. Chapter two. But I think the answer, of course, is yes. If 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 it follows those criteria, you determine it is.
Okay, uh, Chris, do you have anything that you'd like to, anything else that you'd like to add?
No, Mayor, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, um, and at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve ordinance. O zero, uh, O 2024 004, Amending Chapter 36 Zoning to Update the Criteria for Granting of Variances to Allow Certain Variations. To Ordinate Standards Without Approval by the Board of Adjustments and to Allow Possible Additional Special Exceptions. Uh, do we have a motion?
Have a question.
Okay.
I wasn't clear on that last bit of information. Is this a first reading, and then we have a second, or is it one and done?
Uh, we're checking that out right now. Uh, we, but we're looking for a motion, and then we can amend the motion to become a one and done if possible.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Lee has made the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Buddy, a second in the motion. We are now open for discussion. Pete.
So Curtis, this was brought before the planning and zoning on June 5th, is that right?
Yes, the back history, which I didn't cover this past time, doesn't, uh, but this all the way comes back from March 25th. Uh, when the council made a motion, direct P and Z, to look at these amendments, basically as a way to, because the costs we were having with attorneys and public notices on our variances and special, our special, Board of Adjustment hearings. And we raised the fees to give pathways for people so they, you know, that are less contentious and for smaller things like we're proposing here.
So when it was voted on by the planning and zoning, was there any dissension?
No, it was unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions?
I do.
Maggie?
What's the downside?
Maggie, a little bit closer.
What's the downside of of having this? Is there, is there a problem out there in the in the forest?
Well, I there, I I had one question, Maggie, and that was if the property abuts the City of San Antonio. And we're talking about single-family residences in Chavino Park. Do we abut the City of San Antonio in anything other than commercial property? Because this doesn't allow the commercial properties in Chavino Park to go right up to somebody's backyard in San Antonio. It only applies for single-family residences that we are eliminating uh their setback, their rear setback, if they're touching San Antonio. Do we have any residences in San, Chavino Park that go directly back to San Antonio residences? And I'm not aware of any, but I want to ask that question.
Yeah, so, good question. Not not single-family residents, but we have some multifamily housing in the 100 block of Cliffside on the back side there.
Yeah, the apartment complex.
Apartment complexes.
So I, I'm not.
They have no backyards themselves.
Yeah.
And they abut, and they don't follow that setback at all. And if you're on Chavino Creek, for example, and maybe there's only one or two, you abut human road.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay, are are we concerned about, because we've talked at times about properties that abut Northwest Military and, you know, being able to see their RVs and things like that in the backyards. Are we concerned about the visibility of properties that abut Lock Hill? Are we concerned at all about those properties? You know, from an aesthetic standpoint?
From from Lock Hill?
Well, Lock, yeah, the the properties along in Chavino Creek that immediately abut Lock Hill.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Are we concerned about the aesthetics of having a zero or a significantly reduced setback?
Yeah, you're talking about basically from um Advanced Smile Care all the way up Chavino Creek to uh Lock Hill Selma. There are some houses that back in there. Not very many of them.
Not very many.
And when you're on that road, you're on San Antonio's road, but you're adjacent to Chavino Park. Those are highly likely uh properties that want to have one of these exceptions. I would say that there's. That that's an iffy question, you know, I don't know.
Okay, uh, and the reason I ask it is, you know, how many of us are going to have friends or family members ask us, well, can they really do that in their backyard? And it's like, did you vote for that? And I can honestly say no, because I'm the mayor and I don't get to vote on anything. But for the rest of you, I just, I want to raise that question so that y'all can consider whether you want people along Lock Hill to build up to the very back of their property, because it's going to be noteworthy.
Well, this this would only allow them to build it to 50%. And then if they wanted to go to the 25%, they would have to go to the Board of Adjustments.
Well, uh, and and they will not be able to have eight-foot in uh solid fencing to be able to build that portable building right up next to the fence.
There is solid fencing already there.
No, but it's six-foot solid fencing. It's not.
Yeah, but Mayor, the 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 road is higher than the 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 homes in that area are are kind of in a hole.
Yeah.
So the fence is actually higher, and it shouldn't exceed the eight foot, eight-foot limit on the on the.
If it's higher than eight feet, then that's not an issue then. Okay, I'm I'm just asking the questions because, and that's why I looked at you, buddy, because you know that neighborhood so much better than I do.
I mean, because we're in a hole too. I mean, the Heedner is probably around six feet higher than it's built up. And so even that fence also, I mean, I I have to go to the second story to see if the archers go up.
Conrad?
I'm just wondering if the HOA doesn't have rules that.
That mitigates.
The HOA in Chavino Creek has a Architect Review Committee, and this would probably have no impact on Chavino Creek.
Okay, okay, I I just wanted to ask those questions in case, uh.
Yeah.
Wanted to make sure we thought about that. If if we were buddying up to San Antonio residential neighborhoods, and we don't want them to be building in our backyards, and so we wouldn't want to be building in their backyards. We want to be good neighbors.
Mayor, on terms of the second reading. That subsection shall not apply to ordinances designated to address administrative matters. Administrative matters shall be defined as any matter which does not constitute the substantive, the substantive laws governing the citizens of the City of Chavino Park and all matters within the authority of the administrative staff of the City of Chavino Park to regulate with the approval of City Council. That second one, I didn't really fully understand, but would seem to me that the zoning ordinances constitute a substantial laws governing the the citizens.
Pete.
So it, I don't think this is a pressing issue, is it? I mean, if we have another, this has to run another month, is that is that an issue?
No, it just means that citizens who might actually want to put down a pad to put up their uh eight-foot building along their fence are going to have to wait another six weeks. And that's not the end of the world, but um, you know, it. Okay. Pete, second question.
Yeah, so I I actually think Maggie asked a really good question, and her question are, is there any downside to this? And to me, I I've looked at it, and the only downside that I see is that we're placing our trust completely in Curtis and uh and Bill to administer this. And I think that is a uh a very, very small ask for a for a huge benefit, being able to do this.
And 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 let's just go back to that, because in in other cases, we allow for certain items to happen without City Council being involved anymore. But whenever those actions are taken, that we're advised of them after the fact. Uh, and maybe, maybe we want to consider that after-the-fact notice so that, hey, we know what's going on here. And we can monitor it, keep our fingers on the pulse. But that frankly, until it's broken, we don't need to fix it. We don't need to be involved in the process and making it simpler on you guys. But to know quarterly how many of these things are coming through there might be beneficial, and and we can either put that into the ordinance. Uh, we can put that into our procedures, or we can uh leave it up to the discretion of the city manager. But frankly, Bill's going to remember, but our next city manager isn't going to remember it unless we put it into our policies or into the actual ordinance. So so do we want, you know, Pete, your point is is very well taken. Do y'all want to hear about this on a quarterly basis, what's happening, or do you care? Buddy?
Well, I don't think there's that many opportunities that, you know, it it goes into that where people are asking for a variance. I mean, we have, we have very few. What do we have, like maybe four a year?
Usually one or.
Yeah.
Sometimes we'll go through two years without one. So this is a special exception, not a variance. And you're likely to get a few more special exceptions in the 10%. And that's easy to report back to City Council. It wouldn't even be quarterly.
Yeah.
Just whenever one happens, we just let you know.
Okay.
Because we have to post a notice of the board, it's going to meet anyway. I already kind of do that. Anytime there's a special exception, you all, you know about it.
Okay, sounds great. Okay, uh, do we have any further discussion? There's no further discussion. We have a motion to approve ordinance O 2024 004, Amending Chapter 36 Zoning to Update the Criteria for Granting of Variances to Allow Certain Variations. To Ordinate Standards Without Approval by the Board of Adjustments and to Allow Possible Additional Special Exceptions as a first reading. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries, 5-0. Okay, uh, item 8.5, Discussion Resolution R 2024 010, Possible Amendments to the City Policy Number 18. Updating the Guidance to the Board of Adjustments for Variants and Special Exception Hearings. Curtis?
Thank you again, Mayor. I'll be real brief on this. Uh, this, we broke this, when we first resonated last month, we had it, tanned it together, tail at the end. We broke it out because it is a separate policy, passed administratively, not ordinance with a reading. We wanted to have on here in case there was any changes in the, that you voted on in the ordinance, that we would make sure that it's uh changed in the policy as well. We want to keep them, you know, succinct through the process. There is no changes in the policy that are outside of the scope of the ordinance, as in the variance criteria and special exception, except for how motions are handled. That's the only thing that has been changed, and all that language came from our city attorney. I mean, I can run through that if you want.
No, no, that's fine, unless somebody would like for him to review that. Okay, uh, thank you very much, Curtis. Do we have a motion to approve? Let's see.
We'll, we'll have it under consent under this, with the second, so they'll get passed at the same time, and the language is consistent. So this is just discussion tonight, Mayor.
In case there happened to be a change next month for some reason. We want to pass the policy at the same time we do the ordinance.
Okay, okay, very good. Okay, okay, very good. Okay, um, item number 8.6, Discussion Update and Way Ahead for Possible Signage Along Loop 1604 Sign Corridor. Bill?
So, I would describe this, that instead of taking, moving forward in strides, we're moving forward an inch at a time. First slide. There's five key documents. You have been exposed to the memorandum of understanding, and you authorized me to sign that. And the authorization would be once the city attorney and I, along in coordination with the mayor, believe that the terms are consistent with what we briefed you and favorable to the city. Um, we're in final draft, and we have not got 100% concurrence from Bitter Blue and their attorney, that we are in 100% common ground, but we're, we're right there. This one is close. Remember, the memorandum of understanding doesn't bind us to do anything. It only establishes the procedure that we're going to move forward, and it has a timeline. I'm going to show you a timeline in a minute. So signing the memorandum of agreement doesn't say we're going to have signs. It just says we're going to explore the possibility of signs, and it outlines that there would be an easement document, that there would be a lease and a sublease, and that there would be, um, a request for proposal. I, I hope we can sign it by the end of the week. I sent a fairly direct note to Laddie today saying, "I'm not sure this is going to get passed by November if we don't move this along." Um, but we'll see. The second one is the easement, and they're mostly concerned about the easement, because they have to establish an ability to get electricity there as long, as well as a travel easement. And they had to come up and take a look at the, the properties and say, "How am I going to get that easement there?" And we, the city, are mostly interested in, um, being granted the easement, and then being able to grant it to the, the sublease. So our attorney has looked at it. We're not that far off, and we're okay there. There doesn't appear to be any showstoppers. The lease and the sublease, this is where the rubber meets the road. And there are a couple issues which we, the city, think are very, very important, and I'll just throw them out there. Um, the easy one is that if for some reason you sublease to, um, Nick's Sign Company, and then Nick's Sign Company went bankrupt, and then you had to go out and recompete it, depending upon the economic conditions, we wanted a three-year period of, of grace to allow the city, whoever is running the city then, to go out there and compete it, instead of saying after three months or after one year, the lease expires. And I believe we've got concurrence from them on the latest draft of that. The part that's a sticking point is the city originally wanted a 99-year lease, and the, and the primary reason of that is to protect our interest, and because we can't predict what the, the Bitter Blue, Rogers, whatever entity is going to be in 25 years, is not going to be what it looks like today. And then there may, they may actually sell rights to some of these locations. And as the city is, we want to be the controlling factor. And so we wanted a 99-year lease. They came up with basically four 25-year leases, with the fourth one being a 24. We came back and said, "No, we'll settle for a 25-year lease that, um, is evergreen, that every year you go to the next 25, until you get to year 75, then you go to 24." We thought we got agreement of that, then this weekend I get back to, I got four 25-year leases. Five, you know, the, the break between this, the budget workshop and this meeting, I was on the phone with the attorney that's working that Allison, and I'm like, "I want you to communicate tomorrow that this is a showstopper, and that if we can't get to this, then we need to have a serious conversation about even continuing this." So we'll see what happens with that. We can always, uh, back off, but I think that if we want to protect the interest, we don't want a bunch of signs out there that then the property gets changed hands, and we're not the controlling interest. That just, I mean, that's, that's where we are. This, the sublease then needs to communicate that, so that when we go out for a request for proposal, that they know the terms of the sublease, and that they don't say later on, "No, we gave you a proposal, but we didn't know it was going to be a 25-year lease." Now, we're only proposing a 25-year lease for that. So there's no 99-year deal on that one. But they have to know what the, the base conditions are. And then finally, we've drafted a request for proposal. We're pretty good at it. Curtis did most of it. We got staff to the, the, uh, to Allison. I tweaked it a little bit. I sent that in May to Bitter Blue, but we haven't received comment. I sent him another note today. I said, "Hey, you know, we haven't received comment. Is there an issue?" And, and maybe it is, that there's no issue with it, so there's no comment. But it is kind of complicated, in that we're dealing with and three different parties with, uh, two sets of attorneys. So there's the city and our attorney. There's the Bitter Blue and their attorney, and then there's the Rogers family. And that every step of the way, we get concurrence, and then there has to be a review by the Rogers family, which illustrates why, and they're great people, and they're good businessmen, but it illustrates why we need a long-term, uh, relationship on this thing, so we protect the city's interests, and we're not inadvertently taken advantage of by a second or third, um, business owner down there. So I got, I think I got another, um, piece. This is, this is a draft timeline, which we're within three days of just blowing this out and saying, "Well, we're going to punt to the next month." If we don't get this, uh, consensus on the RFP and the lease, then we can't approve the MOU. If we don't get the MOU approved in July, then I can't release the RFP. The RFP needs 30 days of, uh, co- competition, and then we have to go through the, the analysis and the review of the RFP to come up with a recommendation. Because again, until we get a proposal from a sign company, we don't know how much money we're talking about potentially getting. We don't know what it's going to look like. We know about where it's going to be, but there's no way I'm going to say to City Council, "I recommend you approve this," unless I see the terms of the actual proposal. And they have to be favorable, and we know that there's some, you know, there's some, there's some, uh, you know, beautification things that people will, will weigh in on this, and that, that we have to weigh in the advantages and disadvantages. So we will never know that until we get the actual proposal. So potentially, it's feasible that we could, there is a course of action, says we could do this by September 16th. At this point in time today, unless something breaks through tomorrow, I don't think that's going to happen. So if you go to the next slide, you know, there's these documents that we would have to negotiate. We also have to bring back to you the actual lease agreement, by the way, and then later the sublease agreement. But above that, we also have to amend our sign ordinance, and, and in order to do that, we got to go to planning and zoning. And the sign ordinance I'm talking about is the sign plan. It's actually not the sign ordinance. The ordinance allows for a corridor, um, a 1604 sign corridor, which has been approved already. That part of the ordinance doesn't have to actually be amended. What has to be amended is the, the plan that Bitter Blue originally submitted for all those pretty big corridor signs. And so the specific locations and the, and the general specifications of those signs would have to be amended in order to allow the signs, and then we would then consider the, um, the lease agreements and all the terms, et cetera. So again, you know, we're looking at, just looking at an approval of the sign locations, not the actual signs by the planning and zoning. And that probably isn't going to happen in August. I mean, it's feasible, but probably not, so now we're looking September, and if we don't get the Rogers family concurrence, it could be October, then by the time we bring it to council, it's October, November. So that's the basic timeline there.
It's been a little bit longer process than Bill and I'd hoped for when we started into it a year ago. Something that we had talked about, Bill, was the right of first refusal for the city of Chavano Park to buy the locations if they're going to sell the locations. Because the Rogers family scattering to the wind is not something that we want to have to deal with at the end of the day, and having somebody that, that we don't necessarily like, and that doesn't necessarily like us in the future, isn't something that we have, that we want to have to deal with. We've talked about the ability to transfer within the Rogers family, and to the extent that it's within the Rogers family, you know, it's the same person, whether, whether it's a partnership or LLC that's owned by six members of the family, or a partnership or LLC that's owned by 15 members, it's still the Rogers family. We're going to just send the money to that one LLC or one limited partnership that may have more owners at some point in the future, but at the point that they start pulling those interests out and try to transfer them beyond that, Bill and I talked about that, and that's actually something that we can negotiate after the end of this agreement. And one of the things that I consider to be just instrumental in this whole thing is, I believe that ultimately Texas law is going to turn the property rights along highways over to the actual landowners, and take those rights away from cities. And if they take those rights away from cities, then there could be any number of signs that go up, except that we already have an agreement that we've locked the Rogers family into with our sign corridor agreement, and with this agreement, we would be telling them, we have told them, they've said, "Well, could we have more signs?" And the answer is three. Three, that's it. You can't have six, you can't have 12, you can have three, and that's it. So I, you know, I consider that to be a very beneficial, long-term impact for the city, because we are controlling signage, uh, and we're doing it in a fiscally responsible manner for the city of Chavano Park, as opposed to, "Well, what about six signs? Uh, I like three more than I like six." Bill?
I have nothing further.
Okay, we're now open for discussion. This is not an action item. Any discussion? Pete?
Yeah, ju- just a comment. One of the things that you have, I was looking at your timeline, and you have 30 days once you get the RFQ then to evaluate it. I, I used to have, I used to work for somebody, used to always tell me, "Don't put the rope around your own neck." It seems like 30 days is not very much time when you're dealing with this many people. Uh, just to set expectations, I, I would set that at 60. I, I think that's a more reasonable time.
So that, that's intended to be the release time for the RFP? So there's only about three companies that are going to compete for this. That means they've got 30 days to submit a proposal to us.
But then your evaluation time? Once you receive those bids, you then have 30 days in which to evaluate it, to bring it forward to council?
Yeah. I think my timeline has it much less than that, and it won't take, it won't take about, about three days.
Yeah.
I, my, my assessment, but, but I, but, but I'm not constrained to a timeline for evaluating the bids. I can take those, now, may, I don't know what my, uh, RFP says specifically, but, you know, that can be looked at.
Okay. Go ahead, Pete.
So the, the other thing I'd like to understand too, so the revenue coming from this in the city, is it a, a lease agreement, or is it a revenue-sharing agreement?
It's a lease agreement. It's a set amount. They're going to lease from us, and we will agree that we are going to split that profit, or that revenue 50/50 with the Rogers. So it's not based on how much money they bring in for advertisements? And then you could have a down year.
So, so it would be a steady stream of income that would come into the city?
It would be a lease agreement signed for, with typically a monthly charge, with an escalation charge that will go up every, either year or every five years, or whatever it may be.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, before we go to the next item? Okay, uh, brings us to item 8.7, Discussion Action, Approval of the Employee Group Medical Dental Vision and Life Insurance for the Benefit Year 2025, and authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement. Kristen, you did a wonderful presentation during our workshop. Uh, do you think that you'd like to do the same thing, and just a little bit shorter for our, our audience?
No, sir, I have a much longer version.
A much longer version? You've got the, the 22 slides instead of the 15.
Just as a refresher, so we are currently offering four plans for medical, and this year we went to bid. We had five different companies provide responses with a multiple options per company. Uh, we met with the staff and the city's benefit broker, met with the compensation committee, and evaluated what we considered probably the two best offers. Um, and there were multiple things to consider with that, uh, IRS limits for what we can offer, the cost to the staff, the cost to the city, and, uh, any difficulties related to changing insurance, um, for both the city and the employees. And so I believe the committee made a recommendation to stay with Cigna. And so we were asking to be able to move forward, um, with a contract to have the City Manager review that. Just to keep you in the loop, the reason we need such a tight deadline is the city deducts payroll a month in advance. So our employees will have to start paying for any changes they make in their September payroll for insurance changes that would be effective October 1st, which means I need to do open enrollment August 1st. So I have half a book written, and we're waiting, uh, for your final decision. And we cannot provide this information earlier, because insurances do not provide, um, underwritten quotes more than 90 days in advance. So it, it does put a little bit of a crunch on y'all to be able to make a decision, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so, so Brenda, kind of in a nutshell, uh, the cost of the plan for our employees, or for, for the city's share, is going, or the cost of the plan is going up by roughly 10%, which is not out of line with where other plans are experiencing this year. And the amount that we are contributing into an employee spending account in essence is going up by roughly a 10% number as well.
Seven forty-five plus seven point five, a little more than that, maybe?
Well, I, I did the numbers, and it was 10.5%.
That is in line with the benefit increase to the local market. Um, they were guessing an eight to nine percent increase for, um, a regular user. Uh, we tend to have a little bit higher, what's called rock, r- loss ratio, uh, and we did have a few larger significant events that impacted our insurance, um, so our quotes were not the lowest possible available.
Okay. Okay, um, at this time, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to approve the City Manager or his designate to enter into a contract for group insurance to provide the following employee-paid employee benefits. Medical Cigna contributing $820, and 25% for dependent coverage. Dental, Ameritas, and 50% dependent coverage. Vision, Ameritas, and 50% dependent coverage. Group voluntary life standard at $50,000 per employee. Do I have a motion?
Still move.
We have a motion from Maggie, a second from Conrad. We're now open for discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Brings us to item 8.8, Discussion Action Setting the Dates for the City Holidays. Bill, other than one city holiday, is there anything that we need to consider, other than are we going to do all of these holidays? Actually, I was thinking about the next item. I was thinking about the, um, the citywide events. But no, please, tell us all about the proposed city holidays.
Well, um, typically, we have tried to in advance select the, the holidays. What we're trying to do this time is actually get it set into our budget, so it's included in the budget and it's accounted for. So we're, we're a little bit earlier than we normally do. We have 13. We have, is it? Two, three, four.
We have 13.
We have 13 holidays. I will tell you that there is a proposal on the table here to add June I will tell you that there is a proposal on the table here to add Juneteenth as a next as an extra holiday. And I'm probably at fault for that because on Juneteenth this year, we were all here and we couldn't, there wasn't anyone else doing any business, so to speak. Our attorneys, the other cities, not every city takes it. But I made a comment that says, well, what are we doing here? We probably ought to be adhering to Juneteenth. You know, this is not, this is just up for consideration. We do have a typically, we have a Memorial Day, which is the last Monday in May, and then you have a Fourth of July. And so Juneteenth is in the middle of it, is kind of a rapid, two weeks, two weeks, and you have that. We need to do something for Juneteenth, at least to acknowledge it. Now, one of the options we have is that on 9/11, I can't remember what they call it, Patriot Day. And we give firemen and policemen an opportunity to take leave associated with that. And they can take paid vacation or they can use leave or whatever. But it's kind of like more, it's a privilege, they can do that. We could do the same thing with Juneteenth Day associated with that. So it's throwing it out there. Mayor and I talked about it. I'm okay with, well, I don't know what we would call it, you would you would we would somehow make it a holiday, but we would make it administrative holiday. If we put some language in there that says that people could take, use their vacation leave, their time off, their excess leave, et cetera. But I don't think we want to be a city that says we're ignoring that and that for some reason we're purposely trying to ignore Juneteenth Day. We haven't acknowledged it, we need to at least acknowledge it.
Okay, that's a great points, Bill. Would there be the flexibility for us to make, say, Juneteenth, President's Day and Veterans Day alternate holidays for employees that they can choose two out of three? Depending on which departments you find to be appropriate for each one of those. And then to still have the flex day for the people that wanted to take that 14th day in the year that they're kind of using their own time.
I didn't fully track that.
That 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 we're pay, we have 13 paid holidays and that you get to choose 13. But there are three of them that are optional, that you could actually come to work on President's Day, you could come to work on Veterans Day, or you could come to work on June, Juneteenth, or you could come to work maybe even the day after Thanksgiving. I don't, yeah, Pete?
So the way I understand it is you look at at this current year and we have 13 holidays. What we're proposing is to have a next year is to go to 14 holidays. To me, that seems excessive. That seems like a lot of holidays to be taking off as a city. I, you know, I kind of went back and looked at some of the, some of the holidays at different locations or different cities. So City of San Antonio doesn't take President's Day, they don't take Good Friday. And so you kind of look at the different, kind of what different people are taking. So my, I think the question that the mayor is asking is a good question. Do we really need to add another one? Or can we add some flexibility into our current schedule that allows some flexibility for employees to take a holiday that that they want to celebrate?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
It would, and I, I take your word on the President's Day and the Good Friday. I also know that they take the whole week off between Christmas and and New Year's Day.
They almost take the whole week off for Fiesta too, so.
Yeah, that too. But to your point, you know, if I were to say which would be the two flex ones that you could actually get, if someone came to work and there were only a couple of people at work, it would probably Battle of Flowers and the Juneteenth. Because because everyone's gone, I mean, maybe San Antonio's not gone President's Day, but almost everybody else is, you're not going to get any work done. Maybe someone could come to work, they're not going to do anything. Now, Battle of Flowers, a lot of people are still working that day. Juneteenth, there's still a lot of people working that day. So maybe if that was, and I'm, I haven't even talked to any of my folks, maybe we want to, I'll turn to you guys, do we want to table this and talk about it and come back? Or are you all okay with where this is going?
I have no preference, judging by, I mean, the firefighters, they're, they get lots of days off in between their shifts. So I've never heard anyone, any of my firefighters complain about what holidays, you know, they all, the only thing I've ever heard is, you know, if we forgot to to add that that extra time on their, on their, their leave schedule. But that being said, I personally tend to, to take September 11th off only because I belong to an organization that that I helped chair for Memorial, the Memorial Stairclimb downtown. That being said, I don't really have a preference between, you know, if we had the flexibility between Battle of Flowers or Juneteenth, I mean, I'd rather have the Friday, if I'm being honest, because it ties into a three-day weekend.
Yeah, that's true.
But that being said, I personally don't know of any, any of my employees that have ever voiced concerns over that. And I, I think we're, you know, we'd be okay either way.
Chief, do you want to?
Were you tracking what we were saying?
I can hear you in the background, sorry, I started feeling a little under the weather.
You want to say something?
Well, I'm going to come to you next.
Okay.
As far as the holidays go, you know, like, I always heard Chief Dover say, you know, we talked about September 11th and so forth, but I'm, I'm pretty, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit under the weather. I'm fine with with what the council decides.
Thank you. Buddy?
No, I think as you look at the holidays and depending on the demographics, your association with religion, with, you know, culture events, I mean, at some point, we, I think we need to draw a line to limit the number of holidays. But at the same time, I mean, some of these aren't even holidays anymore. I mean, look at the day after Thanksgiving. I mean, just recently, some of the national retailers have made it a point not to open on Thanksgiving Day finally. But yet, you know, things have changed. I mean, we have Amazon doing Black Friday 12 times a year now. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, at some point, I think we need to draw a line, have so many holidays and make some of these holidays optional, as the mayor said.
Okay. Kristen?
I was going to play devil's advocate against the chiefs. One of Bill's comments was that our ability to be effective and get work done when it interacts with other organizations is limited because they're closed. So the chiefs are always going to be open 24/7 and they're dealing with other departments that are open 24/7. As far as the number of holidays, absolutely, I have a city here that has nine all the way up to 21. So I may be moving to be though. So there's a lot of different options. And I don't think that we were looking for a way to get one over on y'all or try to add more of a benefit. We do have a limited cost involved in adding a holiday. I, I think a hard cost was around 3,500 or so. And that's if all of our public service, they, they earn credited time to go into a bank. And if, when they take that time off at a later date, somebody has to fill in and pay overtime for them. So that's an extreme cost for that. But the morale issue is always helpful for the city internal staff who gets a little less attention than the public safety staff.
Lee?
I look at this list and I see an awful lot of holidays. And we are dealing with emergency services and providing water. This many holidays quite frankly bothers me. I'm going to recognize that, well, all but two are national holidays. I think Juneteenth is uniquely Texas and and the Battle of Flowers, that's a San Antonio holiday. We're not San Antonio. I've been to Battle of Flowers one time, long time ago. I'm not going back, so I can't see the flavor for it.
Mayor, how about if I would just withdraw the, the Juneteenth as a, as a city hall holiday closed? And just say we'll make it a optional holiday, people can do that.
Okay.
I kind of like the Friday of Battle of the Flowers, people can take a three-day weekend. And my last comment was in two, up until 2012, we had 14 holidays, not 13.
Conrad?
So just to come back to what at least, I think Juneteenth's a federal holiday now, correct?
Juneteenth is a federal holiday.
Yeah.
But I'm, I mean, if you take, if we're up 14 days, you know, if you work five days a week, that's 20 days as a month. You're taking up 14 days of that, just to give you a ratio there. I mean, it's almost a month.
Okay. Okay, brings us to item 8.9, discussion action, setting the dates for the city-sponsored events, citywide garage sale, Arbor Day, Earth Day, Independence Day, National Night Out, the Holiday Festival and Picnic in the Park. Oh, Holiday Festival, Picnic in the Park, is that combined or is this a new one?
The holiday, the Independence Day is Picnic in the Park. That was probably just an old action item, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
And Mayor, did we get a consensus for the calendar or do we need to vote on that? Are we okay with it?
You withdrew the Juneteenth and you gave them the opportunity and you, I think that you had a consensus that we were going to have the 13 days that we'd been previously doing with an option for people to do what they want to.
Just wanted to be clear, so we'll put that in the minutes and we'll record it that way.
Yes.
Okay.
You withdrew the item, Bill.
I think in the past you have voted on the actual holidays and.
We'll put that in, we'll do that at the next meeting. Bill withdrew it, so I just honored his request to withdraw it.
My request is to move the calendar, the holiday calendar up because it goes in the benefits guide and the benefits guide goes in open enrollment, which is why I keep moving it higher in the calendar for y'all. But I will, I will honor Bill's request.
Well, let Bill put it back on the table, but I won't let you put it back on the table. Maybe Brenda, but Bill, did you want to put this back on the table?
Yeah, I think it would be great if we just had a.
So at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the 13 holidays as we've provided previously with the dates provided with Juneteenth to be a, an optional flex holiday for staff members. Do we have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion from Maggie, a second from Conrad, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries, Lee, how did you vote? Okay, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you, I listened. Okay. Brings us, thank you very much, we reconsidered that and brought it back. Now we're back to item 8.9, we put it back on the table. Discussion action, setting the dates for the city-sponsored events, citywide garage sale, Arbor, Earth Day, Independence Day, National Night Out, Holiday Festival. And Bill, the, the only dates that are kind of different from year to year are the garage, the citywide garage sale, Arbor Day, Earth Day. We always do Independence Day, the first Saturday, the Saturday immediately before the Fourth of July and not do the Fourth of July. We do National Night Out on the date that is provided. We do not have trunk or treat on here as far as the listed items, which I believe was probably a typo for the picnic in the park. So, and trunk or treat is the same day every year. Without objection, we'll talk about the garage sale Arbor Day. And you'll just note the other ones.
Yeah, so we usually do the garage sale in March. The only issue that might be considered, Easter's not a conflict this year, there's no problem. There's the, the spring break from the school district. And that's the 10th through the 14th of March.
And are, do you have an alternate date just in case of rain? Do you have a rain date? The 21st of March?
Do you have the calendar actually? It's a lot easier to see a visual calendar than it is just word document. Right now we have two possible dates, the Saturday after spring break and then the next Saturday after, you know, a week later. So the 15th or the 22nd. And I don't know what your experiences are, would you rather have a, a citywide garage sale at the tail end of spring break or, you know, does that really matter? I mean, I, I'm not, I'm thinking the, during the spring break on the 15th is probably a fine time to do it. If you're probably coming back into town that way and most of our folks aren't affected by the the, the spring break of, of, of the school anyway, but I don't know.
Okay, so you're proposing the 15th.
And that's the end when it's spring break?
The spring break is 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. And then the possible garage sales are the 15th or the 22nd.
Okay. Are we going to have an alternate date for?
We could do the 15th with an alternate on the 22nd.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
Great.
Okay.
Arbor Day, Earth Day.
We go to April. So what we try to do is deconflict the Fiesta and Easter, if, if there is a conflict. Easter Sunday is the 20th, Good Friday is the 18th, we obviously don't want to do anything the 19th. Fiesta begins a little bit later this year, it begins on the 24th. They probably began later because of Easter. So I know that there's, I think the flambeau parades on Saturday, the 26th, and that's like a little 5K, no, it's like a 3K downtown. And there, it's not a huge parade or event, but there is an event that, the evening of the 26th, I don't think there's a lot the afternoon of this 26th. I think that frequently you have Oyster Bake and you have Alamo Heights Night and you have a couple of those that might be the 25th, 26th. But if given the two dates of the 12th and the 26th, it just seems to me the 12th is earlier in the year. It's cooler and it just breaks it away from Fiesta and Easter. I would recommend the 12th.
Okay. Independence Day?
And just so you could track, let's go to June. Independence Day is the first Saturday, but prior to Independence Day is going to be the 28th. So again, it's almost a week before Fourth of July this time. I think it was the 29th this year, so one day earlier. But it's a Saturday before. Yeah. So it's six days in, in, in front of that. But the alternative is to wait till the 5th and.
Nobody's going to be in town.
And I don't think people will come, you know, there'll be a lot of people traveling and doing that stuff. And so I recommended the 20, 28, 8, what are we, 28th. Okay, just so you get eyes on National Night Out. We go down to October. It's the 7th, so usually, you know, it's, usually falls in the beginning part of the, of the month. Now it's the 7th because the 7th is the first month, Tuesday. And so you would take a look at, I mean, we're not changing, I mean, that's pretty much a lock. But if you look at trunk or treat at the end of the month, the 25th, Halloween is Friday, the 31st. So trunk or treat, oh, we normally do it on a Sunday. But I'm not sure, we talked about that. Yeah, so I think we just, I think I did that calendar. So my fault, that, yeah, that should go the 26th, sorry about that. So there is a good break there, it's not that hard to put on. We traditionally do it on a Sunday, it seems to work out pretty well there. There will be probably elections, early voting probably is going to be going on there. So if you have early voting, you want to do it on a Sunday night, not a Saturday night probably, I don't know if it matters. And then just go to December real quick. So the 6th, that's good, but that's. So the sixth, that's good, but that's, you know, Thanksgiving is the week before that, so that's probably, there's no other option. But the sixth, we always do that, that seems to be a great time to do that.
Okay, okay, thank you, Bill. So do I have a motion? I'm gonna give you the dates, yes. March the fifteenth, burg of the garage sale, Arbor Day, April the twelfth, Independence Day, June the twenty-eighth, National Night Out, October the seventh, trunk or treat, October the twenty-sixth, Holiday Festival, December the sixth. Do I have a motion? We have a motion from Lee and a second from Conrad. Do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same, all opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Budget calendar, discussion action, review of the budget calendar and setting the dates for the budget special meeting in August. Okay, do we have, Bill, do you have anything that's?
Yeah, I just want to highlight the eighth and the fourteenth, and Brenda outlined that last workshop.
We did that at the workshop, so we're just.
Two, you know, the workshop number three, we kind of briefly talked about it, but the proposed time is five-thirty, which the city manager presents its budget, and then we're, we're, are you proposing six-thirty, August fifteenth? I see there's a noon on the fifteenth and a Wednesday, the fourteenth, so I'm not sure.
That would be the alternate date if the Wednesday, the fourteenth at six-thirty doesn't work. I would prefer not moving it to Thursday at noon because that's also a card date, so.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying that.
Fourteenth? Okay, and Conrad was going to be gone one of those dates, but everybody else was going to be here for the others.
The eighth.
Yes.
We should be able to zoom you in, but you may not be in a position to do that, but it's always possible.
He can vote, but he can't be a part of the quorum for the special meeting. Isn't that right?
Exactly. We have to have four on the eighth.
You have to have four in person for each one of the eighth and the fourteenth. But you can still participate and vote. Okay, so do we have a motion to set special meeting for August the eighth at five-thirty, Wednesday, the fourteenth at six-thirty? And we'll have our, and then a workshop Monday, the twenty-sixth at five o'clock. Now, one question real quickly, why is our special council meeting at six-thirty instead of at five-thirty on Wednesday, the fourteenth?
That's a great question, Mayor. Five-thirty would be even a better time, I think.
Conrad, which one works better for you? Oh, on the sixteen, on the fourteen?
Fourteenth, I'm good. I'll be up here at seven thirty in the morning and we can just go all day.
Is five-thirty better or not?
Five-thirty's fine.
Okay, so do we have a motion to set those meetings, the eighth at five-thirty, the fourteenth at five, at five-thirty, and Monday, the twenty-sixth at five o'clock? Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Lee, do we have a second? We have a second from Maggie. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. It's now eight-thirty-five. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, golly, I'm sorry, guys, you know, Pete, Pete's the only one that wants to leave. Anybody else? We have a, we have, do we have a second?
I second.
Oh, Conrad's gonna second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries five-oh.